Okay, before we start the meeting, officially start the meeting, we are trying to organize the meeting to have a little bit more, kinda like the Board of Supervisors.
Like a gag order?
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm making a mistake here.
Okay.
And this is one of the reasons why we're trying to do it, to avoid interruptions and everybody's working out things. So we do have a sheet there, and what we ask you to do is if you have a topic that you want to address before the meeting, which we have our open session, or if there's an agenda item, then what we're trying to do is catalog them all, keep them all together. So if we're talking about one agenda item, we can bring everybody in at one time. So we're gonna implement that starting this time.
Now, is that only for new topics?
No. It's for, if you, okay, let me explain the way the Board of Supervisors works. If you attend a Board of Supervisors meeting, they have an agenda. If you wish to speak on any item in the agenda, you fill out a little slip. You put your name, the topic, and so forth. You put it in the box. The clerk calls you up in order, that they decide how, whatever order they put. You're allowed three minutes to speak. There's a little, actually a little traffic light thing. It starts green, and then now I can, two minutes or something, I think it goes yellow, and then at three minutes it goes red. We're not gonna do that. But what we're trying to do is limit the conversation back when we get in these sessions where people leave. We're ending up here at, you know, 10 o'clock event, and there's two people that...
And I understand, but like, say for instance, I just looked at the page, it says, "The Children's Center Director's Report."
You wanna speak on that to sign in?
Well, if I, I don't know that I wanna speak on it, but what if, once they start speaking on it, I have a comment? Do I make that comment, or do I have to go play that...
You can come up and put your name on it. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to have respect for the people that come to the meeting, because we had a lot of complaints from the people that came to the meeting, that the meetings were too long, and that they were dragging on, and they couldn't stay, but they really would like to get to the, to the final finale of the topics. So we're trying to have some respect for the people that are coming to the meetings, so that everybody can get a chance to hear all the subject matter.
Okay, you all take your questions.
This is a small community, you know, we've always pride ourselves in being unformal. What I see now, this is like a gag order. It says, "Three minutes per person, but 15 minutes max." That means five people can only speak, according to what it says on here. This is just one way to gag the public, in my opinion. Wait, I'm still speaking. And, so this is like a gag order, or just a gag to the public, and then I hear you guys saying "we." I didn't even see this in any discussion with this board, or anything, and it's, and it's already printed on the agenda. So who is the "we"? Can we put names to who the "we" are, who decided to put this on here?
Yes, I'll be happy to answer that.
And should this be part of the meeting though?
Wait a minute, please, okay, this is what we're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're not in the meeting.
Let's find the end, and we'll talk before we get us on the topic.
Did the chair recognize the speaker, and the speaker was paid? I'm addressing your issue right now.
Yeah, just so you can answer those two things. Who were the "we"?
Okay, I'm gonna answer that. Okay. Okay, the board, Linda is on the board, I'm on the board, Ron's on the board.
So you guys had a quorum?
Excuse me, I'm talking. When we decide we're going to run the meeting a certain way, there's a, a rule called Robert's Rules of Order.
Right.
Which some of you are familiar with. And basically, it's how to structure a meeting, so there's not a lot of chaos, not a lot of debate, not a lot of argument, a lot of, so forth. What we're trying to do is present a more fruitful meeting, where we cover the topics, we go through the agenda, we address the issues. What we're trying to avoid is the constant arguing, battering, and so forth, back and forth, where everybody just interrupts and speaks when they want to. So we're not gonna do that. So what we're gonna do is, the board, which we are Board of Directors, we have the, the ability to direct...
Who made the decision, Tom?
Excuse me, I'm still talking, you're interrupting me. This is exactly what I'm talking about. You would be recognized by the chair. I happen to be the chair at this time. When I recognize you, you may speak. I'm still talking. So what we're, what I'm trying to explain is that we are going to try to organize these meetings to be more fruitful. We have had comments from people, we've had complaints, we've had people leave here that were upset because of what goes on.
Okay, my question was, who is the "we"?
Okay, excuse me.
Who is the "we"? You said you were gonna answer my question, you're not answering my question.
Okay, please, just understand how this works. Maybe, maybe, just listen to what I'm saying. You raise your hand, and you're recognized by the chair.
You said you were gonna answer my question, Tom, you're not answering my question.
Is this...
You're being disruptive.
Leave, then...
We need to leave the meeting.
Yeah.
If you're gonna interrupt the meeting, you need to leave.
I think that's the whole idea.
The chair runs the meeting.
It's not a meeting yet, you haven't called it, put order.
Yeah, you said this is a discussion, it's a forum.
It's not even a meeting yet. And you say Robert's Rules of Order, there's, if you're gonna do Robert's Rules of Order, there's three more committees that were formed with three, with three directors on it. So how can you have a committee, because according to Robert's Rules of Order, you can only have two people on a committee?
Okay, this is a guideline. We're gonna try to have, follow a guideline and follow some order. If there are more people speaking, the chair has the ability to extend the time. It's only a guideline, Brad, we're trying to be respectful of the community and their time. Please call the meeting to order. If you'd like to speak on the topic, you can put your name on there, and you can speak three minutes on it, and we're gonna respect the community.
Okay, but who were the "we" that made the decision?
That's it, final.
She answered the question, okay.
Did you guys answer the question?
Call the meeting to order, Tom, and we'll...
Okay, they called the meeting to order as of 7:15, I believe. Let me check my timer. 7:14. Thank you, Deb. Okay, the first is, we do the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Because I'm the tallest guy.
And we have that, and we don't have to...
Oh, we got a flag, we don't have to do that. Okay, Ron, will you lead us in the pledge?
Go ahead. You're better than me.
Okay, ready? Again.
(Inaudible) to the flag. United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Pence has made a arrangement with a gentleman that has come here to speak, and although you're not on the agenda, we're gonna allow you to come up and make your presentation.
It's three minutes.
You got two minutes? No, no. Introduce yourself, let us know, we didn't realize you were walking into a horn station.
Holy no. I'm Richreski. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Toronto Water Board, president of ISDOC, and I'm running for the new LAFCO, a LAFCO position. LAFCO has an opening for an alternate position this time. Now, I think it's really important that we have the best that we can represent us at that table. I think it's just vital we do that. And although I respect the guy that is really against me, I gotta tell you, I think we can do better. So, why can't we do better? Basically, let me tell you what, my experience. Let's look at my, well, before that, let me tell you who I am, or what I do. I'm a conservative Republican, from a small town. My, my philosophy is that government should be small and close. The closer to you, the better, the smaller, the better. I said my experience. Let's talk about my experience. Let me pass this out, because we don't have an overhead here. Just passing it to you.
Thank you.
There's a couple, here's somebody else who wants to... I founded two companies, either, two diverse companies I started. One of them was in the bike business, and one of them was in the hospital supply company. I started them, and I sold them. I was a CEO of two other companies, and one of them I took public. And then, the last five years of my working life, I was a stockbroker, and I retired at my age 58. So that's my work experience. Elected, I was a Villa Park City Councilman for 12 years, and I was mayor two times. Villa Park, community of 6,000 people, so it's small, two square, uh, two square miles, 1,300 acres, so it's a small town. So, I've got experience there. And Villa Park is a small, I mean, Toronto's a small water district. You know, we serve as Villa Park, part of Orange, we get, we own half of Irvine Lake with the, with the Irvine Ranch Water District. So we're, we're small. Let's look, when I was, okay, board member, ISDOC. Now, look at the things I was appointed to. I was appointed to the governor's, the gubernatorial appointment to the Regional Water Quality Control Board. That's a big bureaucratic organization. I was on that board. I'm on the area executive board for the Orange County Emergency Management. I've been on the sanitation district, I've been an alternate on the fire district, and I've been on vector control. If you look at all those things that I've done, and you think about those experiences, you gotta know that these are pretty unusual experiences. When you put them all together, you gotta, you see that you have a skill set that can be brought to bear to help argue whatever we're arguing for. My, my energy, I talked about my experience, my energy level. If you look at what I've done with the community, look at the things I've done locally, and then look at ISDOC, more often you can watch ISDOC. I've been president of ISDOC for two years. We're much more transparent than we were before, way more transparent. We have new bylaws that everybody approved. We've got dynamite speaker programs. I mean, we've got dynamite programs now that we never had before. Look, if I were elected, you gotta know I would represent you well. And you gotta know that it's a loud, articulate voice that will represent your needs. And I promise you that if you have an issue before the board, I won't be like some people that sit there like a butt-butt-along, they will hear from you. I'd like to answer any questions you have. Yes?
I have one. What is the meaning of alternate member?
Uh, the alternate members, he sits at every meeting, but he doesn't, he only votes if the head guy's gone. But he can speak. Todd Spitzer's an alternate member, and he's on LAFCO. There's, ISDOC supplies one-third of the money for LAFCO. The city supply, uh, supply one-third, and the county's one-third. And those groups get to put two people on with an alternate. Anything else?
Hi, I'm familiar with LAFCO and with ISDOC, which I think a lot of people may not know what ISDOC is. I seem to be referring to the Independent Special Districts of Orange County.
Yes, ma'am.
Organization, okay. Also, the LAFCO, part of their charge is to help cities and communities and areas plan to prevent sprawl.
Right.
And they've been sort of negligent in that regard, in my opinion, and the opinion of a lot of people. Housing and the need for additional housing seems to always have trumped sprawl, the issue of sprawl. How would you address that issue with LAFCO?
It kinda depends upon what area it is you're talking about. But remember that, that I don't really go much for government interference. I'm a pretty conservative guy. So on that one, I would have to say that, I'm not trying to avoid it, it sounds like I am, I guess. But I don't know the answer, 'cause I, you gotta see what the parties are, who they are, what they're talking about, where they're talking about. I'm not one of these people that wants everyone to move into a small town and go up and commute and have bike trails, all that kinda stuff, in town. I'm not for that. I dislike these urban platters. Does that answer your question?
A little bit. I, we as out here are especially concerned about residential developments, communities getting put in along San Diego Canyon Road. They keep coming up with these plans that are gonna destroy habitat, and are, are not buildable, and also violate the special districts' plans, and specific plans for the special districts. And so, we are very sensitive to our specifics plans being ignored, and incompatible uses going in that destroy habitat.
Well, I'm not for that, the sprawl that you're talking about there, not at all. And from my perspective, it really depends upon what the people that are there want. Again, I, I think it's a local issue.
Thank you.
It's a broad question, I, I didn't mean to avoid it, but...
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. See you, goodbye.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Have a great Fourth of July. Whatever the next holiday is. The next holiday.
Yeah, see ya, Blondies.
We move on to public input. Okay. We have a couple of people that wanna speak on public input. Wendy Angel?
Oh, yes. Okay, first of all, I was just gonna say, my interruption earlier was to just say that maybe the meeting should be called to order, because, you know, if you're trying to control the audience as a board member, then you should call the meeting to order. Otherwise, it's just neighbors here, the gathering, so anybody could interrupt and talking, or, I mean, not that it's, not that it's the polite thing to do, or whatever, but that was my reason for interrupting, so I wanted people to be clear on that.
Thank you.
So, and I think maybe you guys realize that after a while, but, okay. The second thing is, I have three things. Okay, I got a flagpole, and it's really a beauty. But my question is, I don't know the status of that flag. Is that flag SMRPDs?
I gave it.
Okay, so we could take that flag, and I could follow through on a nicer, American-made flagpole.
I got that from Todd when he was in the assembly, and he said it'd come to...
All right. And then we could just sew it to make it a slip sleeve, and da-da-da-da-da. Okay. So I didn't wanna do any of that, but I did spend $3 on that pole.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, I asked Greg to put it on the agenda, and I don't see it on the agenda, and it had to do with these, I got with Greg, he said I could get with Kevin to get these, I could print these out on my computer, so that I could put them on the SMRPD chili cook-off signs, which is what everyone is wanting to do. Okay, so then my mind went further about maybe pursuing having stickers made for just that reason, or stencil, which would be fun to paint, too, we could use it over and over again. So, and I think I talked with Kevin, he said he'd look into some pricing and things like that, but it wasn't on the agenda, and so I don't wanna pursue anything without, you know, 'cause we've gotten in trouble about, I mean, Greg said, "Well, just go ahead and do it, it probably won't cost very much money," but I don't wanna do that, so...
Is, is this for the chili cook-off, or for...
For everything.
For everything.
I mean, we did this because we were trying to get our feet up about not having SMRPDs stated on those banners, so we went ahead and did this. And so, in my mind, again, went a little bit further about having...
No, 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 I know. Yeah, if, if I may, this is something we could...
I think we, yeah, I think we can just do it.
Okay, then I will just work with Kevin on that. Okay. All right. And then, the other thing is this whole signup business, and the three minutes, and all that stuff. I mean, it just seems like, it's not that very often that people have to leave because it's so late, but I think a lot of it is not just the public comments, it's what the board spends the time on, repeating things that we've heard six, or seven, or eight times already. And so, I would ask the board to look to themselves before they start putting stoppers on the folks that come to the meeting to have comment and discussion. And with your earlier thing that said about, you know, we really don't want the debate, well, we, we do want the debate, that's part of the community thing. So, those are my public comments.
So, thank you. Can I...
Yes.
Maybe we're not supposed to do this, but look to ourselves, what are you suggesting that we do? You know, I, you know, when I was president, I, I opened it up, and what, what's happened over time is that people tell me, "I don't go to meetings anymore because of all the stuff that's going on. I don't go, I don't like all the anger, and I don't like all the yelling, I just don't, I just don't go." And I've had more than a few people come, and so, the attempt is to, maybe it's wrong-headed, but the attempt is to just make it so more inviting for more, more people to come.
Well, I don't think, personally, I don't think having to come in and sign in is one bit more inviting, you know? I don't see how that is at all inviting, but, you know, and the other thing is that we're not the Board of Supervisors, et cetera. And, you know, I think there are other ways to, I think the meetings have been an awful lot better over the last number of months. And, you know, we should just try to keep going that way, instead of setting up all these rules and regulations to make us do it. We should just be doing it, and I think that we've all been accomplishing that, I mean...
Okay, well, please understand that, that the effort to do this was based on input we've received from the community. People have left here and said that it's, it's just a catfight in here, and they don't wanna come back. And what we're trying to do, the attempt, is not to stymie anybody, but to control the environment, so that everyone gets a chance to speak, everyone gets a, let's say, a measured chance. So someone doesn't speak for 20 minutes and continually interrupt during the entire process. That's not the way we wanna run this meeting. What we hope, and your, your points are well made, and we appreciate that. You were concise, you brought it to the board, what you, what the theme is on, and we are open to accept any input. We then decide how we're gonna act on it. And one of the first things I learned when I became a, a board member is they said, "We're obligated to receive public input, but we're not obligated to act on it." So if someone said, "We think we ought to do this," we can say, "Thank you for your input." That doesn't mean we have to do it. So I just want you to know, as, as a Board of Directors, we are directors, and we do confer, and we do try to make this work the best we can. Sometimes it doesn't always work that way, but we are making that effort. So thank you for your input. The next, on the agenda here?
Wait, 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 I'd like to say something. As part of the "we" here, I had no idea that there would be that radical change in our agenda, and I liked the verbiage that was previously in the agenda that said some of the same things, but in a more friendly tone. And there's just too many definites in here. Time period, 15 minutes total. No speaker, definite. Each speaker will, that's a definite. Must, put in. It, there just, it has a negative tone. And it obviously incited people to come here and come back, because what it said before was similar, but in a more friendly tone. And if I had had opportunity to participate in this change on the agenda, that's what I would've said, so I'm saying it now.
Well, thank you. And what I would ask you to do, Shay, and I appreciate that, is, I don't recall what the original text was, if you can just submit it to us, so we...
It's on all of the other agendas.
I read it.
Previous one.
Oh, okay.
This is brand-new, this agenda.
Yeah, well, I think this came from, again, going back to the Robert's Rules, but anyhow, let's, let's move on, so we can continue.
Excuse me. I also signed up for public comments.
You did sign up for public, I was gonna call them in order.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought you were going on to different agendas.
The next one I have is Linda Oberg, and you wanna speak?
Yeah, I had the same comments about this. I read this thing, and I thought, "Well, what is going on here? 15 minutes total? We've already spent 15 minutes, does, does that mean we're done? And how much time have you guys taken?" You know, it doesn't...
If, if you're asking the question, that means we've been very liberal and loose with our interpretation. We're trying to be a comedy.
Well, that's the thing, if you're gonna say you're gonna have these rules, and then you're gonna make exceptions for when certain people are speaking, or when you have a comment to make, it's okay for you to make a comment, then it doesn't, it's not, it's not fair. You know, you'd say you're not trying to stymie people, but the fact of it is, you're gonna stymie them, because you're gonna say, "Okay, you've had your three minutes, but somebody else is saying something you want, you're gonna say, "But, okay, they can talk as long as they want." If you're gonna make exceptions...
Well, in this first session, we are...
And I wasn't done, either.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, and as far as people complaining about rambunctious meetings, or whatever, you know, you know, that's the nature of having your constituents there at your meeting, is for you to listen to them, and not, you know, it can be a messy process. If you can't handle it, don't come to the meetings, you know? It's not like it's that, you know, big a deal. And also, I think this is something that should've gone before the Policy Committee, and I don't know whether they discussed it as a policy to change it. I didn't hear anything about that. And I think that the argument and the discussion in the meetings is always a good thing, even if you don't agree with whatever anybody's saying, it's good to get the ideas out there. You guys wouldn't hear the ideas if we weren't here making them. You'd be doing whatever you wanted, without even thinking about your constituents. And I do, I am curious as to who voted for this, and, because I think when it comes time for elections, we're gonna, you know, the people are gonna wanna know. So, if you could answer that question.
Again, it wasn't a vote.
Why wasn't it a vote?
Okay, I'm gonna answer it, trust me, if you would allow me. It's a guideline from Robert's Rules. It's a guideline. We're trying it out to see if we can respect the community and their wishes from the people that made statements that we didn't get through the agenda last time, and we went for two and a half hours. That's all. It's not meant as a gag order, or to gag the community, not at all. So that's the answer to the question.
The effect of it is that, huh?
Well, you know what, I, I mean, I guess that's your opinion, and everybody's entitled to their opinion, but it's not meant to be that way, and it's Robert's Rules of Order, just a guideline. And we're trying to follow Robert's Rules of Order.
I think what Debbie said about something being on the agenda, so now we can't raise our hand and make a comment? You have to walk up there and sign in and wait for them?
Well, what we're going to do, what we're attempting to do, and, and this is, this is a good example of allowing you to speak uninterrupted, without having other people interrupt you. And we are, we are going to go through the, the list of people that wanna speak, and then we'll open, open it up for some questions, and then we'll move on. So, it, what we are trying to avoid is this back-and-forth interruption, and that's where, you may think that's good, but in any organized meeting, that is not a fruitful way to move the agenda. The Board of Directors will listen to the people that are making the comment.
Am I allowed to make a comment? Or not?
Okay, but this is, no, we don't interrupt. See, this is my point.
When you get done, are you gonna say, "Do you have a comment," or are you gonna just move on?
If you will let me finish, instead of interrupting me, then I might be able to explain that. And this is exactly why we have these rules, because people just feel they can blur out whatever they want, at any time, and we have to stop and listen to them. We're not gonna do that. The chair will recognize the speaker. You've been recognized, you've made your, you've asked the question, I'm responding to that question. This is the way we're going to try to run this. Now, we may make some options and some changes as we go on, but we certainly wanna hear what the community has to say, but we wanna do it in an orderly fashion. We don't wanna have this back-and-forth argument, "Will you send this in?" So we're not gonna do that. So, thank you for your input. Next speaker will be Linda May.
Thank you. I have a general item that, I just wanna report to the people in attendance that I did pick up from Tom today, at the beginning of the meeting, his notes from the survey. I've been through it, I, I have a lot of questions about it, and I will try to get some additional answers from that. I have a question to you about the, is this policy of on the speaking, speaking covered as an agenda item elsewhere that I should speak to, or should I speak to that now?
Are you saying, is the survey on the agenda?
No, 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 the, the policy about speaking.
No, it's not on the agenda.
Okay. I'm on the Policy Committee, there's been no Policy Committee meetings, as far as I know. And one of the ways that you can keep order in a meeting of the board is when you have committee meetings ahead of time, and you work things out in a committee, and you get the kind of free exchange from people and ideas and that kind of thing, and it's discussed, and it's out in the open, and then, you get an idea of what's gonna work and what's not gonna work. Then you can come back and get community input, or not, or whatever, make up, but this does appear to be unilateral, it does appear that there are decisions being made, that's causing a quorum to be had, outside of the regular agendaized board meetings, and it just, it doesn't look good. So, thank you.
Thank you. If I may respond to that, again, going back to what we just said...
I didn't ask for a response, thank you.
I may respond, though, I would be, as a chair of this meeting, I have the option of making statements. The, what we have done is, we haven't created this policy, we've simply taken Robert's Rules of Order and applied it to our meeting. So I just want the, I just wanna make it clear that what we were attempting to do, and I say attempting, because obviously there's some disagreement on, on the, on the policy itself, that what we've done is taken the standard... is taken the standard format for a meeting and just plugged it in. We haven't created it, we haven't written anything different. We simply said, "This is the way a meeting is made." So that's in response to that. I thank you. Scott Breeden, you have the public and board input, so would you please speak?
Okay. I was going to speak about the speaking policy.
Yes.
If that's recursive, I don't know. But I remember when Iran took over and sort of started running the meeting, you know, that he liked, and I thought, "Well..." One of the things I noticed was he said, "Well, okay, we're going to have comments a little bit differently than the way it was before." And I thought, "Well, okay, let's try this out." And I think, for the most part, it's worked out pretty well. So I've been to Board of Supervisors meetings before. I know what the, you know, the procedure is, and the lights, and the filling out and all that. I've done it at the City of Orange meetings, and they have something similar. I don't think that here we necessarily have to do that. The state law says that public meetings, you're obligated to receive public input. It doesn't say how you do that, so there's some flexibility there, and I think we shouldn't... It doesn't pay to get too hung up on Robert's Rules of Order because we don't have to use Robert's Rules of Order. U.S. Congress does not use Robert's Rules of Order, but they have a way of running the meetings. So I think... I don't like the repetitious comments that have come up in several meetings before that, but as long as people say their piece, don't just repeat somebody else. I think we can have that system without having the over-formalized format that seems to be presented now. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point. I think we are...
I signed up, but you didn't call me.
Oh, are you? I'm sorry.
She was...
Oh. You didn't...
He's... Oh, I'm blind.
Are you...
He can't see...
You're the first one. Are you in the open public session?
Yeah.
Are you in the agenda session?
I'm in the open public session.
Okay, I'm sorry, it wasn't checked.
I'm sorry.
I apologize, Lisa, and you have the floor.
I have a couple of things I want to address. I tend to like what you're doing. I think it's a little bit structured, but I appreciate the fact that you're giving the public somewhat of a time limit. Anytime I go back and I watch our YouTube meetings, it's just crazy, and I've heard way too many times that people don't want to come to the meetings because they're very hostile. And I know, Linda, you said that they can't deal with it too bad, but that keeps the majority of the public away from the meetings because the meetings are hostile, and it seems like...
Same with I C S, huh?
Under.
Under. Yeah, Linda.
That it keeps a lot of people away, because not a lot of people are hostile in this community, and they don't want to be a part of what's going on. I've referred them to, "If you don't want to sit through a meeting, go to the YouTube videos," and you watch the YouTube videos of our meetings, and they can't even get through a YouTube meeting because it's so repetitious and argumentative and obstructionistic. And so I'm sure there's going to be a gray area where you guys will find that, you know, the public can speak, and, you know, maybe you're not bleeping it three minutes, but I'm interested to see where it goes. Also, these meetings are not, you know, town hall meetings. These meetings are SMRPD Board meetings, and I think if the community has issues, the issues need to be brought via email or called to Board members, and this isn't the only time, once a month, to air issues that the community has. So if there's issues, then they could be on the agenda and be brought up at that point as well. I'd like to then to switch gears, talk a little bit about the Silverado Children's Center, and I just have some questions, I guess more to Shay, but to the Board since it has to do with the Children's Center. I really want... I wanted to find out how long Canyonland has been fundraising for SCC. Is there administrative fee that's taken when you are granted grants?
No, nobody in our organization has any. It's not in our... It's not in our bylaws.
Okay. And I wanted to find out how many grants that you've received in the name of the Silverado Children's Center. So I don't know if that's some information that you can put together and provide the public, but, you know, I think that would be very interesting to know that.
Yeah, I've sent it out numerous emails, and, yeah, I've given it to the Center Director for the last year, so... All it is is, I mean, Megan's got... Megan's got reports of the checks that came in. There's just three or four checks that have come from Canyonland Conservation Fund, donations to the Children's Center. They're in the bookkeeping.
I'm not saying donations that CLCF has given, like, say, $1,000 to the Children's Center. What grants have you applied for with which companies? And do you show that, you know, not showing that the check is $1,000 that you gave, and was it from Semper Energy? Was it from American Grant Association? Whatever. I'd like to understand what that, those kind of grants are that have been given. I mean, in the name of...
Given? You said two things. You said "applied for," and then you said "given."
Well, granted. Granted.
Oh, granted.
Granted.
And the name it towards...
Yeah, that's all documented stuff. Okay. It's not a problem.
Okay.
And by the same token, to not be to Deb worse, but this issue still has never been resolved through the ICL or through the SMRPD Board members on the financials on the Silverado affair. ICL said they gave them to the SMRPD. SMRPD Board members said they never received them, and so I'm just hoping there's some resolution there.
That's an ICL matter. It's not an SMRPD matter.
I'm currently the Treasurer of ICL. As far as I know, there's never been a direct request to the Treasurer for...
This was before you. This was before your recent election.
So if you would like to make the request to the ICL...
Okay.
But I would consider this a request to the ICL. You get what I have to you. I have seen a detailed spreadsheet of the finances for not the most recent year, but I think it would be before...
Yeah, I asked Lynn Oberg before, and she said she gave it to the Board, and the Board said we've never received anything, so it's...
No, there's some very detailed comments.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else, Lisa?
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. And I do appreciate your participation in this. I think this session went fairly well. We are now moving to the consent calendar. We have items A1 to A4. Do any of the Directors have a question or problem with that, or do we have a motion?
I have a mo... Make a motion to the consent calendar. As is?
A second?
The All-Founder? The one I... The one I... My name, hello?
Yes.
Parents? Yeah, hi.
Hi.
Hi. I'm sorry, you didn't take attendance.
I'm sorry. Oh, the roll call? Oh. Okay. I apologize. Let's do this. What do we do?
You just say Greg's not here, that's all.
Okay. You will note that Greg is not here, and the Board members are...
Is that an excused absence? Is that an excused absence?
Yes, it's an excuse absence.
Who excuses the absence?
I would appreciate if anyone has a question, if you would raise your hand. We're trying to... We were... Yes. Linda.
Thank you.
I think it says in the policy that it's a vacation, and that's approved, right?
I think what she's asking for is an actual excusing of the absence of formal...
Okay.
Formal excusing, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, at one point, there was a discussion in the Policy Committee that absences would... that would be identified as being excused or unexcused, and if it is... Whether it's an excuse or an unexcused absence, that it be approved by the Board. So you don't have to do that because that policy has not actually been adopted yet. It didn't come out of the committee yet, but it appears to me that if you would like to follow standard procedure for meetings, which you seem to be attempting to try to do, then you might want to acknowledge absences and whether or not they are excused or unexcused.
Okay, I think, and I'm speaking just for myself, I think that because it was a vacation, that we assumed that that is an existing policy. Yeah. Because it's a... So that's my view. So best, I think we can want this as an excuse absence based on the vacation factor. Okay? All right.
Where are you going?
Moving on. Okay. I think we got... Yeah. Okay, we got a Treasurer's Report?
No.
You know?
I just didn't have time to put it there.
Okay. So let us be known that Treasurer's Report is not presented.
Indeed.
Hey, bye.
I plan to get everything until the very end, and it's just...
I'm concerned at lack because the Report seems to be more often than not, we've had months where there were no Treasurer's Reports.
Fifty-one years we didn't have any. That's not true.
I'm addressing the issue tonight. I'm addressing the issue tonight, and for the term of this current Board.
Okay, Reports, please.
And I'm going to address the two later because I have a concern, and we're going to talk about it during Reports. So...
Did you have a question?
I was just going to say, too, we haven't had a budget in a good couple of years, I believe. And with all the spending at the Children's Center and whatnot, I'm a little concerned about the budget, and if there's money's there for all of this being going down, there hasn't been nothing to look at.
It's a good point.
I'm going to address that, too.
I think Greg is working on it, isn't he?
It's on her. Sunny, Jen.
Oh, you will address it. Okay, thank you. Okay, so Treasurer's Report, we move on to the Children's Center Directors' Report?
Okay. So our numbers have pretty much stayed the same from last month to this month, although we did have an increase in enrollment over spring break. Our income has gone up, our expenses have gone down, our donations have gone up because of the Chili Cook-Off. Any questions about that? Okay. I have a volunteer sign-up sheet with me today for the Chili Cook-Off because we need people who can set up and clean up. So do I just leave that here today for everybody? Okay. And then I also have a volunteer sign-up for some things that we need done at the Children's Center, so I'm going to leave that, too. We have an open house update. We are changing our date for the open house to May 24th because the building is currently in rehab status, which looks fantastic. It should be done very soon, and then we get to move on to the painting process. We're going to do a lot of advertising at the Chili Cook-Off for the open house. Our summer camp update is, we have our horsemanship program that is ready to go with Ms. Kelly as our lead program leader for that. And then we also have just our standard camp program, which we're doing, which is all the basic cool. We recently applied and are now members of Heifer International, which I noticed in going through at the Center, I found something where I believe the Center was involved with Heifer International before.
Yeah, we did a Christmas program. We sponsored a family with animals.
Okay. What's neat is that now they're currently providing, through Heifer International, pre-K, kindergarten curriculum, environmental curriculum, understanding, write for the pre-K material. It's like earthworms and live cycles and things like that, so they've sent us all that. And here's...
And so... Oh, I'm sorry. Is it... Should I wait to ask a question about it?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So back up. What are... Is Heifer International getting involved with the Children's Center, or are we reaching out at this point with... To them?
We just applied for them today, and they're sending us all of their curriculum.
Okay.
So we were thinking, once curriculum schools is part of the program, and it only goes in, we can start a gift... It makes sense to Heifer International.
So they're sharing that curriculum with us, hopefully?
Yes, they're sending us a big package. And then we are also applying for 4H to start in September when school starts. So we would be a charterers of 4H. And then we are also looking to apply to become certified as a nature explorer upper classroom. There's only one other center in Orange County that is certified by them as an upper classroom, and it was actually Lindy, the previous, the interim director, her center was... They were certified as upper classroom. And it's pretty amazing, and with the environment we have, it's already pretty natural, so it will be an amazing draw to be able to show people just to do that. It's amazing. You... Have you seen?
Yeah, I went on their website, and I did apply for a grant specifically for that, but I haven't heard anything.
Yes.
But does... Does Nature Explorer offer up any ideas for grant funding for it?
They offer, yes. They have tons of resources of who you can talk to about grants, who you can talk to about fundraising and donations, so...
That will be...
Yes. Oh, and... Oh, that was a business. Oh, the Fire Department. Kelly was awesome. She went to the Fire Department and requested some... Because we're really trying to work with more natural materials, they gave us a bunch of tree cookies. They're called tree cookies, slices of trees. So they gave us a few crates of those, which was really great. Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, and we are just moving forward. We have done about six dumpsters full of trash that we've gotten rid of and clutter. And Rick Schultz, I don't know if he's here, if he is, thank you very much, he brought us a huge dumpster, which was a real big help because now we don't have to wait every week to look the other dumpster to be taken away. So we now have that dumpster completely full. So it's been just a lot of cleaning out of clutter and...
And brush.
Yeah, there's been a lot... I've been out there gardening and chopping stuff, cleaning inside. The inside's almost... Pretty much every bathroom, every closet, every cabinet has been cleaned out, organized, inventoried, and now we're hopefully going to start really working more on the outside layer of it. Can you address it? Or I have to go sign? I just don't understand the rules yet, so I have to sign that to address her?
No.
Yeah.
No, I will. We're going to be so inflexible. You have a question?
I don't want to... I don't want to disrupt the... I want to follow the process, so I just wanted to understand, so...
That's why I was suggesting that we use a slip, but... And maybe next time we'll have to use a slip so that people could drop off the slices. We want it to be... We want it to be friendly, but we want to have some...
It's arbitrary, obviously.
Can I just put a...
No, you should sign there.[1649.41] Yeah, no, you should sign it, there should be a slip or something. It's not arbitrary.
Okay, more from the school?
Um, that's it, and most anyone who has questions?
Well, I do have a comment that, and Mary's here from Firesafe Council. We do have a canyon inclusive coming up, and you talked about clearing the brush.
Well, the, the OC Parks people came in and cleared all of the school and around our area. We do need some more inside the fencing stuff done, but not so much clearing a brush as just cutting back the bushes and...
That's what I meant by brush, the bushes, they're overgrown in the last few years.
Yeah, yeah. I have a little pair of choppers, but I can only use the other gray.
Well, I just wanted to actually make everyone aware that we do have an event coming up to keep our community more fire safe is to clear the dead and dry brush. They welcome it over there at Agonaba. If you are a resident in the area, you can take, you can't take a commercial vehicle in there. We had one resident who actually had a commercial company come and clear their brush, and they charged him because it had parkings on the truck. But if you bring a vehicle, pickup truck or a trailer, and you got dead weeds and dead trees and dim, they were welcome, you fell out of the slip, it's complimentary, you can drop it off.
Okay.
So just so you know that, that's available.
Okay.
Okay, Brett, did you have something?
Yeah, on the children, how many children are there now?
Um, we have twenty enrolled.
Twenty, okay.
Yeah.
How many are full-time and...
We have three full-time, five part-time for the quarter days. One that is part-time, which is half-day. We have four drop-in and six full-H, so they're part-time.
What do you average per day? We, I knew we had a 3.8 number there.
I think we're averaging about four to five. It depends on the day, it all depends on the day, every day.
But there's no average like for the month?
I would say five to six, yeah.
Okay.
So I'm just estimating off the top of my head.
Can I ask one more question on the horsemanship? Can you tell us where we're at on that? What, what's your plan? Do you have a plan yet?
Yes, we are operating the program out of the children's center, we've decided. We think it's best to do that because it brings people in and they can see the facility and get other ideas for allowing them to send their kids there. And we have all our documents and everything. Right now, we're just trying to compile equipment, so if people have equipment, we're looking for pipe stalls. Kelly has a list and, and I was gonna have a list here for people to sign up if they wanna donate things.
We are hoping to have a workday on, in the area that we're working on having the lesson area that OC Parks has come in and already done, that lawn maintenance. But because of the gopher holes and the safety of horses, we are hoping that if we can do a volunteer workday where people can start collecting coffee grounds, put in the gopher holes and then, I mean, those, those still rates to just kind of make sure they're compliant level.
Are you looking at the area of right, adjacent to the preschool fence by the street?
We were looking at the lower down school, but now we're looking at the upper pasture area or the upper field of the school.
Platter, yeah. It's platter and it's a little bit more tech that.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor Rick, a suggestion, you've got several lists that you're looking for people to help on. Hopefully, we can have a short meeting, that's what this is all about. And if you can stick around after the meeting, then you'll be able to answer people's questions and, and get them to sign up right there. You know what I'm saying? That way, it's like, I'm on spot. So that might help you out, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, Brett, did you have an additional comment that you wanted to make? Okay. Lisa, did you have an additional?
I just wanted to find out how the mold situation was. I know that when you took down all that siding, there was a lot of mold that was there. So I just wondered, were we able to kill it all, was it...
Um, I was unaware of a mold situation. I know that when the siding came off, it was left off for like about two to three weeks and we had some pretty hot days, so I'm assuming that the mold dried up. But I don't think it was...
I can, I can answer that, I can just, I don't think, I, I asked the question and there was no mold, but they did mold avoidance and they sprayed it so that it is mold prevention. So that was the, you know, through the...
They completely dealt like with the siding and they, and all the insulation thing that they...
Right, new, new, they said new windows too, right? No, they're not, they're not new, they're not new windows yet. I don't know if they're putting new windows and they're just gonna keep the old without, being lucky that they're working. But yeah.
Some of them will be, they're like, or will be, I know they've been ordered.
Oh, okay, okay, great.
So that was the answer I got, so that's the answer that...
I have photos, I have...
No, I just saw the photos of the mold, so that's why I was, I was worried that there was...
Was it mold? Did you know for sure? Because I, I, it was not mold, but it was mold, they sprayed something on, it has mold prevention.
No, I saw that it was, I was told that it was mold and it looked like mold and I could send you pictures and then I know they sprayed, sprayed it to kill the mold. So I just didn't know if it was, killed all of it or if it, you know.
Hey, also, when they re, because I've been talking to the guys who've been working and one of the problems before was water was getting in from the top because the black wallpaper wasn't folded over the edge, so this water was getting in. So they completely fixed that because I talked to the guys about it. And then they said that they, they believe that rain gutters are gonna be put in as well, but it shouldn't be a problem now that the, it's folded over, yeah, over the corner.
Plus, it's gonna be hardy board now on two sides of the building and that doesn't rot. It's concrete.
Yeah.
So if water gets in, the drywall can rot, but the concrete won't. And that is where the mold-ish looking rotted wood and everything came from before with the, the rotted siding and then disintegrated wood down inside and it stayed wet.
Okay, we do have, along those lines, we do have a, Mary Schreiber, would you like to address the mold question?
I have a question. Steve, the mold, mold, was that building, was there ever a mold test done in that building? The, the tests like Steve, when you had...
It wasn't nearly as bad, Mary, it was nothing like mine where it was all fanned out and everything in there. It was, there was just spot, a little bit of black spot, moldy that I saw.
Yeah, but I was just wondering if indeed there had been a, a mold test because anytime there is any evidence, because it, it, it has to be mitigated in special ways. And that's not, and just spraying it sometimes does not do it.
Well, it's sprayed, and I saw it after it was dried up and, I mean, it was, it was, it was gone. I mean, it was...
I was just wondering if indeed to begin with, a formal mold test or...
Kevin, I would say the odds are very good, no, there was not.
For a health and safety...
I'd like to comment, the state, the state did come and re, and view our center because they got an anonymous mold complaint and found it to be unfounded. And she left and she documented that, so...
I was just wondering.
So then there wouldn't be any more mold test.
It was undocumented until the siding was taken off the building. And that's when the mold became present.
She looked inside the building and said, there wasn't mold inside the classroom.
Okay, we, there's, there's still a question on the mold, I guess, but we don't know.
I just asked if there had been any official testing, Steve, like you had, Dr. Morris.
I know Steve Jankow, in the other meeting, I believe he said he wouldn't come and work on it unless the, the mold was mitigated or shown not to be there. So I imagine he still kept up to that.
Okay, then...
I think we, I think we should put it on the agenda for next time and take a look at it under the Recreation Facilities Management. That, that would be...
Yeah, let's put this to rest because there seems to be some questions, so Brett, if you...
But I think it needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
We can, yeah, we'll talk to Jim Jankowski.
You're gonna put it on the agenda, not to address it.
Put it on the agenda so that we can then determine...
Address it.
Yeah, it will rest it. Okay. I, I will, because we're, and we're doing very well, by the way. Thank you, everybody, for participating so well. If there's any other questions or comments at this point, I'd like to move on. I'm gonna break a little bit here for my... Yes, Debbie?
Did we ever get the results from the survey?
Okay, glad you brought that up. The survey has been compiled, it has not been presented to the board, so I cannot speak on any of the details. However, I can tell you that a normal survey of this type, to be successful, runs between, usually between 12 and 15% response. We have 19% response. We had over 170 people respond and I can only tell you that there are some very diverse opinions. I don't go any far to do that. So the survey did achieve its goal in gathering input from the community. The Carson Company is on, basically on call, on standby. When Greg gets back, we're gonna determine how we're going to do this in a meeting. And so we officially get the result from the survey and then it would be available to the community. I'm sure it would be posted on our website, so we'll see all the details of some of the responses, so.
I did talk to Greg about that and he said that he is gonna call a special meeting for that, so we can have a special meeting to address just the survey results. What do we get?
I believe Linda had her hand up first, Linda?
I wondered if anybody's talked to Carson about their problems that make the survey look like it is incompetent and if they, what, what they're planning on doing to it and what do you think?
Well, I can address that. The survey, the entire board participated on the survey. Every member of this board had some comment and input on, to some degree. The survey was, the finalized survey was sent out to the board for approval. The board did not catch the error. So all of us didn't see the problem and we approved the survey. Greg Bates personally approved the survey. So although, and this was a, that particular question area where there was a, let's say, a, a rating factor, where it was strong, not so strong, whatever, whatever the deal was, that was kind of the one of the last-minute changes that came in and that was, that was, it was an error. But what I am saying is that we all share in that problem. So again, according to Carson, which I, I don't have all the details, he claimed that that was, did not negate or invalidate the survey, that people just wrote in everything, so...
I, I did call Carson on that issue, Linda?
Yes.
And I did ask him to address that. So I'm hoping that, I haven't been privy to the survey results yet either myself, as you all haven't, but I hope, I, I'm expecting him to address that as part of the survey results. I...
Hello. Brett, I believe you, Brett was...
Yeah, does, does, is Carson gonna make a presentation to the board or anything, or is it just...
Well, his contract said that he would make, he would present the survey to the board. We are determining how that's going to be done, whether that's gonna be done in a meeting or it's gonna, we don't know. And that, we have to wait for Greg to get back to determine. The survey is done, it's just a matter of finding the right time and vein to present it, yes.
So, so someone has seen the results of the, of the survey?
I have not, I, I, I talked to Carson about the content of the survey. I have not seen the complete, complete survey.
Okay, so it's his, he's commenting that there, there are some crazy comments.
Well, he said, I didn't say crazy, I said diverse.
Yeah, 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 okay, I'm just trying to find that out.
Yeah.
And, and then the other thing is, it, it still confounds me actually that, I mean, they're professional marketing and yet they defer to non-professional people proofreading.
Well, we're, we're the, well, we're the client.
Right.
In any marketing program, the client usually has the ultimate authority and the ultimate approval of the project. And we, I apologize, I failed and no one caught it. I, I know, in fact, I think Jay said she diligently went through and looked for all the typos.
I did extensive editing and I missed those basic things.
Yeah, but that, I mean, my comment is, I don't see how by paying that money, the, 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 you know, what's the term? You know, falls to the layman.
There was professional.
There's, I think, to answer your question, the way, when I talked to Carson about it, they're gonna look at that and if, if, if there is no validity to it, they'll probably, I must, I'm thinking from my conversation with him that day, they may throw the question out unless, you know, for some reason people wrote in their answers, maybe they'll count it in. So they were looking at it one of two ways, either throwing it out because it wouldn't be valid or if people wrote in the way it should've been done, counting it if everybody wrote it.
But they're not offering any financial, you know, rebate or something from, I, I don't know. I, I, maybe I look at it the wrong way, but it just seems that if you're gonna leave it in the hands of the board, then the board could've just written it and just been done with, not even had the marketing people.
No, again, in any marketing project or, or research project, or if you're building a house or whatever, the ultimate approval authority goes with the owner, goes with the client. You can't say, well...
I think, I think the building engineers would disagree with you on that.
Well, if you decide that you want something different and, and you say, well, I want the door over here, I want it over here, and you go, well...
But you're approving the questions, not editing of the surveys, is what you're saying.
Yeah, so what, what, the bottom line is, it did not negate the survey. The response was phenomenal and there's a lot of input that's gonna come to us. So it's not a horrible thing, okay?
A thousand dollars, we won't...
With that, yes, Linda?
176 responses. According to you, it's not negated and the reality is that because of that problem and other problems that, that the, both the validity and the reliability of that survey are in question.
Okay, thank you for your opinion. One second, Brett. Okay, thank you. All right.
Sorry about that.
Okay, we will move on now. Do we have any other district business or do we move on to committees? Committees, thank you. Standing committees, recreation?
We were hoping to have a stage budget. We want to, we've been doing work on the stage that's out there. It's been discussed in numerous meetings. Be, due to, you know, safety, the stage needed a rail as, and, and safety for the stage to last longer. Steve worked really hard on getting a durable coating and blocking the front so that balls and skateboards or whatever don't go underneath and people climb under there to get their stuff. So he did a beautiful job, it looks gorgeous, thank you. It's not finished because it, it needs a little more legal railing. You know, there's certain distances that we have to do to keep, you know, to, to comply with state regulations on the safety for the railing. And then canopy, that, that's just for use. The, the bands that play under it to be out of the sun or out of the rain to protect our music equipment when an event's going on, that's, that's needed. We don't have the numbers on that because we don't have a design proposal yet, correct, Steve?
Yes, just tell me what you, exactly what you want and I'll, I'll...
And then when we do, we'll bring like different concepts to the board to see what, what we can possibly do. And what we are hoping is maybe send so much money's going out from the park board to, to the children's center to keep it afloat that possibly we can ask for donations at the music in the park, maybe the first one, and ask for staged, staged donations to offset that or, or something like that. We're gonna talk to the promoters of that to see if that's a possibility.
I've looked into the cave recreation parks thing, canopy's inherent too. You and Linda wanna check this out?
Okay. So we'll, we'll line up a recreation meeting and then people from the public can attend that and two board directors, and we can go over a stage design, what do you think?
You have a quick question?
Quick question. I know that last month, this, we spent, the board spent $1,700 on the stage. How much more has been spent on that stage?
That wasn't all the stage. There were other things in the building besides that.
Last month, Greg said that $1,700 was spent on the stage to make it safety compliant and that it was your time and they even talked about it was over the $1,500 board approval, but it was $1,700, so I'm just wondering how much more has gone into it when we don't have canopy yet or...
I'm just...
We don't have a financial thing to go off of right now to answer that.
I think we'll have to wait for Greg to come back to find out where that number came from. And Steve, if you've got a proposal to put something up there, some numbers and some ideas, I, that's gonna come back to the board and we gotta decide what we're gonna do with that.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
If we can get, you know, just a rundown of the numbers that we've spent so that we can add in there.
Yeah, I get, we move on to the next, and when I have the next meeting, we'll get it on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. You have a quick question?
Yeah, just, if the, if the board can't afford to put any more money into the stage, we can probably raise that through the community and two volunteers to finish it up.
Okay.
If it's gonna be a problem, you know, with any more money going from the board. We'll, we'll figure it out. It's pretty, you know, diverse community and I'm sure we can come up with a couple of dollars or even some labor that fix things.
Trying to get some donations really and some of the...
If it's a big issue, we can, we can, you know, make things right.
That's always good.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And it, and it's totally understandable, there's no hard feelings on it. I mean, we're, we all know that there's very little money in our budget and we're pouring it to, to protect the community asset. So we're all in this together.
Thank you. Linda, you have a second, say.
Yeah, on recreation, I wanted to propose to the board to look at the contract for Naturalist View. I actually attended one of Joel's presentations, his storytelling at the Majeska House, and it was fabulous. And I talked to Shay about it and I called Joel to talk to him about doing something like that for SMRPD. And it was, it was probably one of the best events I'd ever seen, so I did talk to him. He sent me some information on it and I'd like to propose that we look at Joel's contract and renew it and talk about doing something like this for the SMRPD.
Okay, can we put that on the agenda for next year?
His hikes are like that too. He's just really, he just keeps everyone with stories, going through his hikes, he's just a really...
He's brilliant, I think.
Is there missing information? I didn't know that we didn't have a current contract.
No, we do, but we don't, it doesn't, yeah, it's just for four hikes, but I...
Oh, you wanna add to it?
I'm proposing that we switch it up and do a storytelling events.
Personalize it more for...
For, yeah, our desires, yeah. Can use up for that.
Okay.
It'll be on the next...
Oh, I see what you mean, revise the contract, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Finance? I'll catch up on the treasures report.
Yeah, and I have some information from Greg on his side of the report on the budget. Megan has decided to renew her contract with that. And with that, Greg and I are looking at requesting a meeting once a month so we can go through all the financials with her so that we can put together our budget and come to the next meeting with a budget. We feel that it's really important to do that and so that's, you know, our goal. Greg said we're gonna move on a weekly basis. Greg said we're gonna move on a weekly basis until we have a budget on the table. And then we'll soon, you know, have our budget for the new fiscal year as well, so.
Yes.
Does it have any mention of the treasurer in this process?
Um, Ron is part of the tre, he's doing the treasurer's report, but once we, that's coming actually in the next part, which I'm gonna report on personnel.
Okay, next part is personnel and we got currents and traps.
Yeah, I, I didn't actually add these things, I'm not sure what, I didn't even-
Well, we talked a little bit about this, um, Ron and I, and what I was suggesting is because people are busy, what we might look to do is even request from the community proposals to do some of, um, the reporting, including having like our administrative assistant or someone else that they can't do it, or our, our, um, bookkeeper, do some of the financial reporting for us, including the treasures, helping with the treasures report, putting that together. Updating our website because our website is really in need of updating. It's, it's, um, it's kind of dated. And so I would like to make a proposal that we take some of the money that we have to update those things and keep current on those reports for the community.
Do we have a bunch, do we have a number of-
I think, I would like to propose putting some, taking some of the money we do have and putting that in the budget, that is my proposal to the board.
You don't have any idea what the money is?
Uh, I, well, we're, one of the things that we wanted to do was get three quotes and request from the community, if anybody in the community wants to make a proposal, putting out a request for, um, proposal, for somebody to do IT and webma, uh, information, web maintenance and, and reports.
My question is, do we have a number in mind?
No, we're gonna get it, we're gonna do a request for, for, a request for a proposal.
Okay, but you say take some of the money, but we don't know how much money we're gonna take.
And when you do an RFP, they make the proposal to you and they make, make-
Okay, okay.
They put the number out and then you look at three.
So, we're asking for a proposal?
Yeah, an RFP.
Okay, so you're making a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, um, develop an RFP and so that we can hire somebody to provide us with web maintenance and reports at help of the treasures report.
I second that, okay.
And now let's do discussion.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, um, are you, um, considering like someone coming into the existing, uh, data that we have and being able to work with that and go from there? Make changes to it and everything, we're not reinventing the wheel again on the website, are we? Or do we have to do that?
Have to, I don't know. I, I've actually been funding a, um, I've suggested to us that the, the website platform that we're using is not really, doesn't suit us. So, I have a guy that's actually been putting something together and I've been trying to put copy to it, I've, I've just, he's been doing it for me as a favor. So, I thought we could get this new platform and it'd be a lot easier to make.
WordPress, go onto WordPress, that's what they're all saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and it's a WordPress platform and it just looks nicer and it's easier to maintain, so.
Yeah, what's the platform now?
Well, it actually is WordPress now, but it's an older-
Older version.
It's an older version that's harder to use. And the layout, it's just doesn't-
Log style, that's the version, it's log style.
Yeah, the layout doesn't, just doesn't work. The new layout is a lot easier to, to work with.
So, you have access to add PDFs and stuff like that?
Yeah.
But not really work with the site and?
No, we can still do the site and all that stuff too, but making changes to the existing site is not easy. The menus are, are fixed, um, and it just, I've made some changes based on your suggestion about getting where some stuff moving around, but it still doesn't look very good, so.
So, who do you vote on that?
Okay, yeah, we have a discussion, we have a volunteer, we have a second.
And then we have like input on it in cases, is everyone voting high on this?
We didn't vote yet.
We didn't have a discussion.
Yeah, we had a discussion.
Okay, I guess we're open for public input, Lisa.
I think the board needs as much help as they can get. There's just no way you guys can do all of this stuff. And to have Beth be your only admin person, I mean, you guys don't have the skillset to do all of these different categories. And I think the money is well-spent for this community to have people that do this every day and can provide you with reporting, IT, web, whatever it is, research, you guys need help. So, I say yes.
Thank you. Yes.
So, research, you mean to put on the webpage?
I'm just saying-
Or research on, um, anyway, I, I'm gonna backtrack. I don't get what, what you're asking for, for financials.
I can, I can explain it if you want me to explain it.
Well, I-
What do we got?
No, I'm asking the board.
Yeah.
Oh, you're, you're saying the reports.
Okay, I think-
You mean to take the monies and plug them into some?
Linda, would you just restate your, your, your motion?
Um, I made a motion, can we read it back?
Well, but see, I think that confused me because you're, we're, so we're asking that one part of it is financial and part of it is the website?
Yeah.
And part of it is IT for the website?
So, it's get, updating the website with, with the financials. Someone to help run the reports, put them on the website. Someone to help, uh, develop the treasurer reports. Normally even the, like, we have a bookkeeper that really puts the treasurer's reports together for the treasurer and the treasurer reviews them and audits them and those kind of things. That's what the board treasurer does, but the bookkeeper normally does that. Right now, Megan is not doing that, but that might be something that we go to her and we ask her to do as part of her new contract because now she's decided to re-up her contract and, um, one of the things that I'm requesting in that contract is to have a meet, monthly meeting with her so we can go over those things so that we can get those reports and we can have them for you on a monthly basis.
Okay, instead of having, instead of having the treasurer do that.
Right, instead of having the treasurer do that. And then another part of it is getting it up onto the website-
Yeah.
So that you can see it. I'd like to see it before the meetings, so, I mean, those are things that I'd like to review.
Okay.
Yeah, my current process is all manual. I mean, I get the things from Megan on a Friday.
Yeah.
I got them on Friday and I have to do them over the weekend.
Yeah, it's not enough time.
The mailchimp and putting the agenda together. I mean, I, I just say, give me the agenda items and I put it, I just put it in and publish it, but it's, it's all pretty time consuming.
So, would, would part of that be rectified if we changed the due date for Megan to turn the numbers over?
And that's why we want that monthly meeting, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I tried that, but-
So, so then, I mean, then if you had more time, you could do that and we wouldn't have to hire that out on a, on a, another one.
Part of the, part of the problem is the informa, I had asked her, I said, can you, because the treasurer reports are, are for the previous month.
Uh-huh.
And I said, can you give them to me after the first month, so I have all month? She said, the problem is, is that she doesn't reconcile all the county stuff and get all the county information until the very end.
Okay.
So, she just, she sends me about six different spreadsheets and then I create that summary.
Yeah, and I'm totally lost when you say, you know. So, I obviously don't understand the process and that's why I was wondering what we're actually asking for.
The treasurer's report has to be compiled from six different reports. So, if we had the, in, we send to the treasurer, we have the bookkeeper sitting there compiling it all and the treasurer just reviewing it, you will have it undone as the community and that's really what we're trying to get to.
Okay, we have a quick-
So, I'm still not really quite, on the motion itself, is a motion to get monies to spend more on getting these reports?
No, the motion is to, um, put a line item into the budget for administrative services to perform these duties.
Okay, so then that goes off of the three bids that we'll, that you're gonna look into. So, this is just a motion to look into getting three bids?
Got it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I think we've had the discussion. I think we're ready to take a blow. All in favor?
Aye.
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 unanimous, thank you. Okay, moving on. Now, are we still on reports and QR codes and, wow.
Um, oh, I just-
Is that all merged together?
QR codes with Greg Bates and he just kinda goes along with, um, with the IT issue. But what he'd like to propose is, he'd like to have some discussion as to doing QR, uh, QR codes on the facilities, having to do with the history and even Joel's, um, walk where you can put the QR codes into your phone and then read about the history of our community. And those are something he wants to do at the community center, at the community centers and at Silverado Children's Center and at, at the areas and areas.
Okay, if I could comment on that. For those that aren't familiar with a QR code, it's that little square checkerboard thing that you see in ads and if you take your, your cell phone or if you take your computer and you scan that, it takes you to a website, it links you to a website. So, really, all it is is just a, a link. So, whether, if we have something, if we have a history or if we have a facility information or whatever we have, all we have to do is post it on our website, identify that web link and then QR code it. And then that little spot, people can drive by in a car and take a picture of it and then we'll, then we'll be able to leave that web. Mary?
Three directors, I'm not quite sure what that means. When you personnel, through, on a committee, there's three people? I don't know how that works.
Ron, Linda and Greg.
No, I think those are just people making comments in that section. It's not on the, that's an error, it shouldn't be on the-
Oh, is that an error? I wasn't sure if that's part of a committee of three. I was just confused about that.
Just making comments on those areas.
Oh, is that what that is? So, I wasn't sure if it was like the three-person committee, a three-director committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's, okay, that clarifies that.
Okay, are we on contracts? Are we still working on that? Your name is on there.
Yeah, um, one of the things that we talked about was looking at all the contracts, um, again, looking at Joel's. I also looked at all of our partnerships on the, on the website and I noticed that, you know, we were partners with OC Parks, Warrior Society, IRC, Trails for All, the NC and OC Backton, uh, Native Restoration. And what I saw is that the only ones that we were listed on their website was Naturalist For You. So, I thought maybe we could look at all our contracts and we really need to get, um, a link to our website and to SMRPD out of all, all of our partners. You know, so that they can link to us and that we can, you know-
Reciprocal, this is-
We have a reciprocal agreement, so-
I should be on Warrior Society website.
I, I didn't see it, I looked at all of them and I did not see it. So, um, I think that that's one thing that we should look into.
Are you gonna look into that?
Yeah.
Okay, I think it's just a matter of contact.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
We could do that on recreation Shay. Do you think that's a recreation issue, that we should put it back in recreation?
It can, it fits, we could do it.
Okay.
I had, I had actually approached all those organizations and asked them to be partners. I didn't, I know Warrior Society said, we, they had a T-shirt once that had our logo on it.
Mm-hmm, okay. I just thought we should utilize those relationships because they are listed as partners. So, that was my only issue, I suppose.
Okay, so that's contracts. We're now, we're moving on to Open Space and Trails, Shepston?
I, I expected to have a deal to bring to the board this time, but they, they're not quite ready. They, they asked me when our next board meeting was, a month and a half ago and I said, you're not gonna make April's or March, but let's try to make April on this, so. It's not here yet.
So, you're talking about Baker Canyon, OC Parks, Rio de Santiago?
Baker Canyon deal.
Oh, okay.
So, I, I expected eminently to have a deal to bring to the board of the-
So, that's the Baker Canyon seven hundred plus deal?
Yeah.
And you're still working on that?
They are, yeah. I, I thought the terms have already been all worked out and we know what's coming, but I don't know until I see it.
Okay, next item is OC Parks?
Um, people, I wanted to update you on the OC Parks quarterly meeting. There were three of us that were at the OC Parks meeting on three twenty one fourteen and that meeting was here at this location. It's a quarterly meeting, it's, it's sponsored by Friends of Harbors Beaches and Parks and led by Teresa Sears and, uh, there were three of us there at the meeting, Shay, myself and Greg. And Stacy Blackwood was there at the meeting. She was actually the one that led, led the meeting with Teresa Sears. They really address all parks updates. They did talk a lot about our particular area, maybe it's because they were in our area, but I thought it was a good meeting to go to and that we should continue to attend it. There were ten canyon residents and there were probably, I don't know, maybe twenty different organizations Shay, at the, at the meeting.
One, a few, yeah.
Yeah, and some of the subjects that they discussed were revitalization, revitalization of parks and beaches and all the different issues, which I think that we should talk to Stacy Blackwood about revitalization of some of our parks because I think she can help us with that. Um, she also did make a comment that she would give us all new furniture for this room and our community centers. And I did have contact with her, I did talk to her about a week ago and she is going to, she's looking into it for us.
What's wrong with this beautiful thing?
I like that, but the, some of the chairs are not gone. Um, they did talk about the disaster preparedness, uh, issues quite a bit and they, um, were talking about the, um, the school, elementary school as an evacuation center and, um, I guess, um, they don't like that location and they didn't want us to comment on it. As an SMRPD, they asked us to write a letter, so we'll need to probably look into that. Um, they updated us on the Marine Corps hangar. They're going to start having a meeting in regards to the elementary school so that we can, we can attend that. Um, they talked about Carbondale and they also talked about an archery park at Miles Bear Park and they said it was a great, um, success and I thought that might be something that we do out here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would really pull it out there.
It's a great meeting, it's quarterly, it's on the, uh, website of Friends of Harbors Beaches and Parks. And again, if you get to go, I think it's, they talked a lot about our, our community, so we should, we should attend it.
Thank you. Any comment? Okay, would you like to move on?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Oh, you have a question.
Um, could you clarify what they were talking about, about not liking the emergency, something or another? Can you stand on that?
Yeah, um, what they're saying is that they use the school as a staging area for disasters and bringing horses into the area might not be the best idea because in it, at the last disaster they had, they closed off the street and we couldn't get to the area, we had to go, um, from one side to the other even to get close to the area. So, they were talking about horses and, and trailers coming into that area and when they have all of the special police and forces and fire department and they just didn't think it was a good, John Gannaway?
Gannaway.
John Gannaway said he didn't think it was a good idea, so, well.
Yeah, that makes sense because during the Santiago fire, they brought horses from Santiago, uh, uh, stables over to here in Silverado and then the fire came back around, had to move all those animals one more time.
Yeah.
And then they went, you know, all over Orange County, but they got them out of the canyon.
Yeah, and, uh, if you have horses, you know that once you put a horse on a trailer, you know, to move them, you need to just get them on the trailer because it's hard to get them on, especially during a disaster. And then you just get them off, they're not getting on again probably. Uh, it's very difficult.
And a big thing is documenting where your horse is going because a lot of times the people that own the horse aren't there.
Right.
And so, when I went down there to help get horses in trailers, they weren't putting any slips on their man, you know, on their bridles or a sheet where they were going. So, we started that during that, you know, at least people would have a, a sheet to go off of.
Well, I think that, that issue is resolved and we're not, we're not gonna use it for-
Oh, I don't know, they just asked us to write a letter, um-
Okay, do we have someone that's gonna write the letter?
I think Greg is gonna try and put some, a proposal together.
Okay, oh, Beth, make it up to Greg, right?
Then maybe we can see it by the next meeting.
So, the owner you're gonna write is gonna say you don't think it's a good idea to use that as a horse, uh, emergency evacuation?
I don't know what we're gonna write yet, to be honest with you. I just don't, uh, Greg is gonna make the proposal because he's, you know, he was very involved in the last evacuation, as I was too. Um, so we'll see what the board, you know, what, what he makes as a proposal and the board reviews.
Thank you.
And I think we should work with the ICL because I think that they're doing something as well in regards to that. So, that would be my proposal.
Okay, so we're moving to the Addy Riviera?
We skipped, uh, Rio Santiago.
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, we missed, uh, Rio de Santiago and we're back to Shepston and... We missed Rio de Santiago and we're back to Shepston and you guys are really.
We had another meeting with them.
Who is them?
Capital.
Milan.
Milan.
Milan Capital.
Okay, you want to explain what the Rio Santiago is?
It's that project for 100 acres, where half of which is open space and the other half is development from a park to assisted living facility and some houses.
And where's it located?
And it's on the, it's on, at that point, I think it's, I don't know, Santiago, but it's Loma and where the old dump is over there and this, that, that big pile of rock and dirt that's over there.
Gravel pit.
Gravel pit.
Sully Miller.
We're talking about.
Sully Miller.
Across from Sully Miller.
Where the arena is?
Yes, right across from the arena.
No, but that is Sully Miller.
Yeah, that's it.
The gravel reclaiming and crushing it all.
That's it.
So the gist of this meeting came up is that we are, what was the term, alternate fallback and to accept the property if OC Parks doesn't want it or the county doesn't want it. And we're of the, we, they still haven't come to us with a proposal because nobody's made one yet. So we have no idea what they're offering. But it's our opinion that we're not interested.
Is this the building that you're talking to?
We're not interested in being used by them.
Yeah.
Well, it's not contiguous with our area, is it?
That part doesn't bother me because I think it's a good selling point. I think that it's a way to get our name out there and, you know, who knows? But we're way too soon to talk about that yet because we haven't, we haven't gotten any kind of proposal from them. And we're not, we're not interested in being used by them. So we don't know yet. They, they still want to come back to us and talk to us again. Somebody says, here's $5 million, will you take 50 acres? And, you know, then we've got to talk about it. But now, if somebody just says, here, take this, and we're not.
And you're responsible.
Will you take it if OC Parks doesn't want it? We're not interested.
Because our name came up at the city council meeting that we would help, you know, be a land manager. They actually used our name and I thought that was kind of funny and I go, wow.
I like that our name out there.
Well, I, yeah, I think this is an effort of, in particular, Ron, who's been out there burped-dogging, looking for land, looking for, talking to people, letting them know what we do. So it's through those efforts that we probably got known. So we're pending on that, we have no idea what's going on.
But there's no contacts, like we're saying with the Riviera and that property?
That's, that's coming next.
Yes.
No, I mean, but there's not the same people involved in both of those projects?
No.
As in contact people?
Milan Capital or something.
Milan Capital. Yeah, we were not excited by the meeting.
No.
Okay, moving on, if we can. Abbey Riviera, Karen?
Okay, actually, I thought we were going to have a meeting last week to go over, to renew the contract for the Abbey Riviera. And Mike Rupero was the attorney, had to go out of town, so that meeting is postponed to this Thursday morning, so I don't have anything to tell you about that. So we'll have to talk about that next month.
Okay, thank you. Last time with other, do we have any other open space and trail issues that we want to move up? Somebody on the board? Okay, would you like to move along?
No, I mean, other than, once the Baker Canyon gets done and signed, we actually have other, some property off of Santiago that's just on the edge of the district that we're being considered for. But I don't want to talk about it until we get the Baker Canyon done.
Thank you all. Okay, facility maintenance and safety?
That was supposed to be Shay.
Yeah, that was Shay and Linda, you're back in the center.
Yeah, that was supposed to be Shay.
We talked about the state so.
Yeah, that, that was the only update that we have on the state right now.
Okay.
So we crossed that off, right?
Well, okay, ad hoc committee.
Wait, 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 before you say that.
Yes.
Policy committee, under, my understanding was going to be an ongoing committee, not just an ad hoc. An ad hoc committee is formed for a particular purpose for a turn, for a duration of time and then it dissolves when that's done. And it's my understanding the policy committee is going to be ongoing.
Yeah, that's right.
So we need to move policy up here to standing committees.
I thought you usually voted on the standing committee.
We did vote on it.
Yeah, there was a vote.
Yeah.
I'll move it up.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we're moving the policy committee up below the, under the standing committees.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Where are we, SMRPD official media public, are we on that?
Yeah.
Okay, who are we talking about? Here's Karen's, you guys again.
Yeah, we had a, we have a policy Shay and I talked, we want to make, there's a policy in your packet that we reviewed with the policy committee. There is one change that Shay and I made and I have an official retype of the policy. So I'll pass it around, but this is the policy we would like to approve.
Is this something you're asking for action on now?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
What's the change? We added, we don't have it, we added, under procedure, prior to making an official response, the person receiving the call.
Official SMRPD response. So this governs official responses of our board, not each director talking to someone, you know, on their own. But it does address that stating that that director should make it known that they are speaking on their own behalf and not on the board's behalf because they have no jurisdiction.
So are we looking, we're looking for a motion on this. And I think we need to read this.
You should have read it.
Well, yeah, but I didn't read the change.
Okay, so I'm passing it, so I rather change it.
Oh, okay.
So you can read it yourself.
Okay.
You want to, you can read it aloud.
I don't want to read it. You want to read it?
Do I write that for a minute? May I ask a question? It was not in the packet that came out to the public.
It wasn't?
No.
It's on, it's on the website.
Would you mind reading it?
It is on the website.
Oh, I'm sorry. And to address, Linda, next time we have things for the, for the community to know that's being voted on in the meeting and it's on the website, can we attach it to the MailChimp?
Yeah.
Also, like, here's the agenda packet and here's the, this was under staff report. It said staff report on the website.
MailChimp does point to the website. And if you go to there, you'll see the agenda packet and the staff agenda report.
I didn't see a link within the agenda or an attachment.
Well, sometimes what makes it really clear on the agenda is if you have one of the sections saying action items, so that then people will read the agenda and know actual action items from discussion items. That'd make it clear for people too.
I thought I printed it right off the website.
Yeah, it's there.
It's on the website.
If you follow that link.
But it said staff agenda, staff report and you would have to click on it to get the list. It didn't come in the agenda.
Okay.
In the agenda, it was separate.
Okay, in keeping with our organized decorum, you have a.
Just two questions. I would love if the board could provide a transparency overhead or computer projection so in cases like this, when there's something, we don't have to listen to you read, not that I don't mind you listening to read.
No, no, no.
But that we could all see what's going on, just as much as that you wouldn't have to print agendas. We could see the agenda, you know, on the wall behind us. I think it would save time.
I think it's an excellent idea.
Yeah. Now, would you put the agenda for that?
I think so.
I think it was voted on before, I was trying to get a projector.
No, that was for the movie projector.
Well, you can use that with the computer. You know, it's a little bit, the computer might have a PowerPoint thing.
Okay, we're about to hear Shay read.
Okay, I'll do this fast. This is the, it says responsible persons, board of directors, so it only governs us. Policy, the SMRPD will cooperate fully with any media contacts. Communications will include, but are not limited to, media response, press releases, communications, newspapers, letters, flyers, other communications. Communications on SMRPD position will be prepared and presented once the board has all the necessary facts and a clear understanding of the business issues involved. Communications including, but not limited to, press releases will be submitted to all board members for review. Due to urgency and the nature of press releases, the statement will be released in 24 hours if no opposition is made by the board. It doesn't say by the board, it just says is made. The official position communication related to SMRPD position shall be presented by the president or his or her designee. Consent will be obtained prior to use of statements, photographs of clients, volunteers, affiliates, and/or employees. Board members shall not misrepresent the SMRPD by expressing their opinion as that of the board or as an official board position. Note, this does not prevent a board member from expressing his or her personal opinion as a private citizen. Then it has a procedure. The person receiving the call should indicate that the organization policy requires pre- prior, what do I have?
You want to add that?
Oh, 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 okay. Prior to making an official response, thank you, I didn't, I didn't print that one out. The person receiving the call should indicate that the organization's policy requires pre-approval of media questions. And if they give their name, telephone, TV, radio, magazine, or newspaper, someone will get back to them. The president shall be notified when any and all media representatives contacted member of the board and prior to making any response to the media. The president or designee will prepare a response. If the president is not available, the vice president will be the designee. The president or designee will submit the prepared response to all board members for review. Board members are required to review and comment within 24 hours. If no comments are made, the release will be sent out after final approval by the president. Submission of suggestions, comments will be made to the originator of the response. If a change is made to the prepared response, it will be present to all board members. If the change is acceptable, the release will be sent out. If on subsequent release there is objection, it will be taken up at the next board meeting or at a special meeting. Consent shall be obtained prior to use of statements, photographs of clients, volunteers, affiliates, and/or employee. Note, it is recommended that at least two board members review and approve the release prior to circulating to the media. That's our new media policy revised many times.
Okay, I just had one question. The final statement, you said two board members will review and approve, but prior to that, the entire board will approve the press release, right? I mean, if we're talking about a press release, is that, is that?
No. No, it's not, doesn't have to be approved by, it only, you have to comment within 24 hours. If no comments, it could be sent out, but it's recommended that two board members should review it.
At least two should review it. So one, what it's saying here is, it's not recommended that one board director approve and release that upon not getting approved.
Yeah, I just want to understand that the whole board didn't have to approve.
No.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Okay, so that's the.
But the whole board needs to get it so that they can comment on it, so that it goes to the whole board for review.
It's available for comment.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the, what do you call this, the, what do you mean this?
This is the.
Policy and procedure.
Media contacts, official board position and communications policy.
Okay, now that is, okay, yes. SMRPD official media slash public correspondence, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay, so we are looking for a motion to approve this text that we just heard Greg.
I make the motion to approve the media contacts, official board position, and communications policy.
I second that.
Okay, is that that, Beth? Is there any discussion? And you have discussed it?
Yeah, the very last sentence, when it says that two board members will, you know, collaborate together to make sure that that's going to go forward to the media.
Is recommended.
Is recommended?
Yes.
Is recommended that it goes to, how will people be notified, I mean, how will the directors be notified?
This is upon notification?
Before the 24 hours ahead of time so that they would know that this has been written? I mean, I mean, is it, you would have to check your email, I guess. I guess it would probably go out email, right? And you'd have to check it within every 24 hours. Is there like a, like some kind of alert to say, you check your emails or something like that?
The way I see this is.
Or you guys will already know that you're already doing a letter so that you would be looking for the letter? See what I'm saying?
This is minimal.
I think say Ron wrote it and he puts it out and it's on a Saturday and then no one, everyone's gone all weekend and then two people, you call up someone, say, hey, we're putting this out. How would there be a way that you would know that you're writing the letter? You know what I mean?
I think we're talking about, there's two steps here. The board will get the email for the document. Let's say it's a press release. So it goes out to the board. And we're looking for objections. Someone's going to say, I don't like the way this is worded, I want to change this. We don't hear that. And at some point, two members of the board are going to say, I approve, I approve, and then it can go on.
So it'll have to be on working days? It wouldn't be fair to put it out on weekends?
Or somebody could call you on a weekend and say, hey, we've got a hot press release.
We can't work today, I don't know.
I thought it was the president.
I'm sorry?
The president or.
Designee.
Designee.
Okay, well, I think we, I think this accomplishes what we're trying to do here.
I think so.
We have a, we have, we have a motion, we're looking for a vote. All in favor?
I made the motion. Aye.
Aye.
Can I comment one more time? I think I understand there might be a little bit of a problem. Board members are required to review and comment within 24 hours. If no comments are made, the release will be sent out after final approval by the president. But then it says it is recommended that at least two board members review and approve. So it's kind of saying two different things. So I wonder if we need to change it a little bit before we vote on it. Like, final approval by the president and another.
And another board member.
And at least one other board member. Because that way those two jive.
Okay.
Correct?
I have no problem with that. So the statement to be, let's see, the president?
Just so long as those two statements reflect each other.
Yeah, no, no, I agree. And whatever you just said was right. It said the president and another.
After final approval by the president and another board member.
Okay, so we can write that in and then we, we submit this as a final document and we will have a.
I make a motion to approve it with the wording change to be, if no comments are made, the release will be sent out after final approval by the president and at least one other board member.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have, well, we'll get to discussion in a second.
A second.
We have a second. Okay, now we go into discussion.
Was I first?
Yes.
I don't know. Well, then it seems like it should be the president and two additional board members because then you have a majority somewhere.
No, you're having a quorum.
Then you'd have to have a special meeting.
Okay.
Or, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, another question.
Yeah.
Other question, I'm just curious, I have never seen a situation so urgent that due care couldn't be taken to make sure that the whole board knows. be taken to make sure that the whole board knows.
Exactly.
Absolute positive contact.
Exactly. And I think that's, it's specified in there that under some urgent situation, the normal course of business is, the normal course of business is that it goes out to all five board members.
Should be addressed in open session.
May I make a comment about the agenda?
A press release should be addressed in open session?
Why not? A press release is timely. If something happens, if Ryan.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Well, let's say one of the board members resigns and someone else is appointed, you don't wait a month to make that announcement.
It was more than enough. Go ahead.
You can have a special meeting in 24 hours.
Well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll call it special meeting then if we really need to.
Okay. So.
Well, our attempt here was that the whole board be notified.
Yeah, maybe it would be best just to have a, a meeting of, of a majority vote then and in that way you're making sure that you have everyone notified. And that way it's a fail-safe system where no one's going to question anything if it's just two people.
But didn't the committee already meet and discuss all that?
The committee, yes.
Twice.
Twice.
In open committee session.
Yeah.
Agendaized.
So the community really has, we've reviewed it.
Okay, I don't think it makes much difference, by the way. This doesn't make any sense either. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. We have a vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
And we can, here's the official package. Through Deb.
Okay, moving right along.
We can retype it.
Yeah. Okay. Ice Doc represented?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Proposal program.
Oh, yes, okay.
Okay, please, yeah.
I wanted to make a proposal for the policy committee to review sponsorship and usage fee waiver. Shay and I have been talking about when to waive the fees and it came up in kind of a discussion with like fire, fire department and Easy Breakfast. So I have a short form, just a two-page, kind of a, you know, one and a half page application for waiving the usage fee on the community center from another organization and just a short policy on it and I'd like to make a proposal for the policy committee to review it and put something together.
I'd like to review it and put something together.
So you're presenting this, you're presenting this to go into the policy committee?
Yeah, just to draft.
That makes me happy because I thought it was going to be voted on tonight and it didn't go through the policy committee and I, and I was not happy.
It's just a proposal for the policy committee.
Okay.
Just hand it over.
Yeah, and this, and this is just a really rough draft of, you know, something that I kind of threw together as a proposal, not even, probably, maybe not even close to the end product, but just something to start with for the policy committee.
Okay, and the policy committee is?
Oh, well Shay and Lynda may and I are on the policy committee right now.
Whoever else wants to.
Whoever else wants to.
It's open to the public.
It's open, yeah.
Okay.
So we, should we make a meeting? Should we make, well, next week is, we only have a week till the chili cook-off after this weekend, so it'll be in about probably two weeks, you think?
Yeah.
Okay, two weeks.
So it'll be based on your meeting?
It'll be based on our meeting and then we'll bring that back to the board then.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Okay, that's ideal.
Yeah, we, we, we needed a vote for, right here, I need, we need a board motion and I have to bring the, we'll do it next time.
Did you announce when the last vote was? Oh, we have plenty of time.
Okay. Okay.
Wait, oh, I have one comment.
Yes.
I asked for the policy on the meeting attendance to be carried over from the last meeting and it didn't appear in the agenda and I was wondering why. Because I asked on, it's supposed to carry already because it was tabled at the last meeting. So those two things, this, those two policies were supposed to carry to this meeting.
I just responded to the emails that I got with really definite stuff and I, when you said stuff carries through, I, I carried through the, the stuff on the, the communication stuff and I didn't carry that one through. It was not intentional. I'll put it on.
So we'll, we will then table this till the last meeting?
But is there a procedure, I wonder, Bob, is there a procedure for carrying over agenda items from a previous meeting? Do they automatically go to the next meeting or do you have to readdress something on the agenda?
Have to put them on the agenda?
If the decision is made to carry it, I should, I don't know what the procedure is, but I'm sure.
You can still have it.
Okay. Because I was prepared for that twice now and I don't know, I have to wait another moment.
Okay. I guess I should ask, are there any other committee reports rather than both these ones? Does anybody have any, it's on the center? Nothing else? Okay, directors' comments, you're, you're the end or I'm the beginning. I'll be, I'll be first, but I'll go last. Lynda, you want to get the director's comment?
I just wanted to say that I think we heard a few comments that things are going well in the last few meetings and I, I'm fairly pleased. I think everything is going well. There are a lot of accomplishments by this board and I'd like to come next month with a list of the accomplishments of the board for the, to put on the agenda so that we can notify the community of all the accomplishments of this board because they are, they are a lot. I started to put a list together myself and I would like to ask the board to help put that list together and come with a list of accomplishments because they're voluminous. So I want to congratulate this board. I'm impressed by what you guys have done over the last few years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Two things. One, I want to address that, too. The people that I've talked to that don't attend the meetings are for various reasons and very few have said anything to me about the board meetings being so much turmoil that they don't like them. Some people actually enjoy it and come to these meetings and then some, you know, are busy at Taco Tuesday or riding bicycles or whatever, you know, and they have their own lives, so, but I, I want to thank the people that do come to this meeting and sit it out because you care so much about decisions that are made for your community and, you know, that really helps us when, whether you're angry or happy, you make a comment, we know how you feel and without that, we don't know. So I agree with what Lynda said at the beginning of the meeting that, you know, like it or not, this, this is our public input and I, I, I prefer it. So, and the other thing is today's birthday, in case nobody remembered, and I have flower seeds.
Are they genetically modified?
From mom's, mom's across America donation.
Happy birthday, everybody.
Thank you. You get two because you brought two people to the meeting.
Thanks, Shay. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Greg kind of greeting me.
Have you guys heard about the air and sea exchange?
I can work. Come on, I got, I want to plant them.
I have more at home. I'm going to bring, I'm going to bring you guys some next year.
Yeah, me too. Okay. Ron, your comment? Okay, I would.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Where's the pot, Ron?
Pass out some pot and soil now.
Oh.
Oh.
Edit that video.
She meant the container.
Okay. I would just like to close in thanking everyone for participating in our, our event here today. We tried to control it. I think it showed that we can conduct a meeting and be respectful and still communicate. And I know I've taken questions from different people at different times and you're not, you're not being, you know, like, I just want to control it and that's all I'm asking. And we've done that today and I thank you for that. And thank you all for coming and we'll see you next time.
It is non, it is non.
Make some work.
We don't need it. I almost.
One of them says it's not legal.